Some meeting to order. We dispense with the usual things we do in person. And we'll go straight to the road.
Forward. Here. Franklin. Crockett. St. Columbia.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Yes, that makes four.
All right, thank you. And I'm going to go ahead and read, well, first let me just announce that as many, as you know, we had, we've had two meetings now of the city's, make sure I get the correct name, the racial diversity racial equity committee. chaired by Ms. Naomi Cottens. And we had a very productive meeting Saturday and one of the requests, I guess the first thing that we've got, we're going to do coming out of that committee was for the city to recognize Juneteenth as a holiday. As it turns out Senator Hank Wilkins of Palm Bluff did get a bill passed and made that a state holiday. And I want to thank them for their input. And so this Friday, I'm happy to announce that we will have in recognition of the Juneteenth holiday. We will have a city, city holiday. So I'm going to read this proclamation. If you don't mind. Whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, Jubilee Day, Celebration Day, and African American Emancipation Day was first celebrated in Galveston, Texas in eighteen sixty-five. And whereas on June nineteenth eighteen sixty-five, Union soldiers landed in Galveston, Texas with the news that the Civil War had ended. And the slaves were fought with commemoration of June nineteenth became quote, Juneteenth, quote, with a festive gathering of family and prayer and celebration. And whereas this is the oldest known celebration of the ending of slavery in our country honoring the enduring spirit of our African American community. And whereas Juneteenth today celebrates the freedom and achievement of black Americans while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all cultures. As it takes on a more national symbolic and even global perspective that the events of eighteen sixty-five were not forgotten. And whereas we as a city, state and nation must never forget the harsh treatment injustices blacks experienced under slavery. And whereas it is important to continue a dialogue of the realization of what Juneteenth historically meant to all Americans. To broach racial healing, reconciliation, restoration and justice. Now therefore, I'm Mayor Kevin Smith, do hereby proclaim June nineteenth twenty twenty as an official holiday of the city of West Helena. And encourage residents of all racial heritage to observe this day as a community wide commemoration for all citizens and their families. Additionally, citizens are encouraged to support at least one black owned business on Friday, June nineteenth as a way to promote economic freedom for this day. In witness whereof, Mayor Kevin Smith signed this and it will be effective June. So thank you for your indulgence for that. But I did want, we're going to talk about here in just a minute about a parade to honor that day. Okay, thank you very much and thank you especially to that committee. We have, I think some members who've logged on to to watch this proceeding, so I want to send a thank you out to them. This was their idea, their suggestion. And it's my honor to, to enact that. Any questions about that before I move on? All right, the next item on the agenda is the appropriation of funds to cover the fire department. This is something we've been doing now. For fiscal twenty twenty on a regular basis. And I believe it's been sent out a memo from Mr. Turner. Regarding this, so I'll read it quickly for other people who may not have seen it. Dear City Council, the overtime accrued for the fire department for the most recent pay periods totaling twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars thirty-nine cents. Is what it accrues to, to this day. At least this amount needs to be appropriated before overtime checks can be released to the firemen. Also, I have been informed that there will be zero dollars overtime incurred during the current pay period. Derek Turner, City Treasurer. So what we need is an appropriation and as you all know, or for people listening who don't know. The city from spending monies more not legally appropriated. So I would welcome any questions, comments, or of course a motion.
May I have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
What is going to ensure, what's his insurance that there will not be any overtime, that there will be zero overtime for the next pay period? What is in place? What has happened?
I'm going to be honest with you. I didn't write that memo and Mr. Turner, I think is present to answer that question. I do know, what I can say is that our fire department and Mr. Turner and others have worked diligently and I have stepped in and out of those meetings. Just trying to keep a breath of them. To, to get control of the overtime issues at the fire department, something we've talked about every two weeks, I'm pretty sure. And, and I'm confident we've made a lot of progress. As to why he put zero, I'm going to be really honest with you, Mr. Ford, and tell you, I don't know. I wish he were here to answer that. I just, and I didn't see him today to ask him to answer that question. But I don't think, I will say this, he is pretty conservative when he writes these projections. I don't think he would have written that unless it was accurate, unless he had good reason to.
But you know, I know that Mr. Athely was working on something. Just want to know what what has happened, what, what, what do they have in place to assure reduction?
I just, I don't feel really comfortable answering for Mr. Turner. I will say they have looked at many, many issues. And I'll also say that the fire department has for the most part been very cooperative in terms of answering questions. Because it's the fire department, there are issues regarding emergencies that make it more difficult to kind of get to the bottom of it. There are Kelly days, so-called Brown days. There are shift changes. There are a lot of issues that unless you work there. I'll say this admittedly, it's taken me some time to understand it. And so Mr. Turner has really gone down into it and Mr. Ethely, I believe, has been in the process of doing that as well. So I'm not, no, that's not a very good answer. But I don't have a really good answer for you as far as the zero, really don't, I wish I did.
If I can, if I can just start since Ms. Ford is asking about what I've been doing, Ms. Ford. See, here's a nugget for people who say we work two hours though, or three or four hours a month. I was up until about one thirty last night. I've literally been going through the, the time records on a daily basis and I'm trying to reconstruct what actually happens in the department. That being said, it really is complex. And so I've been holding back on that ordinance until I get a full, because I said I wanted to propose an ordinance that addressed overtime. I'm trying to hold back on it until I actually can wrap my mind around everything that's happened in the department. And I've, I've been trying to gather as much information as possible. There's some additional information that I'm going to need that I discovered and I talked to Ms. Ramsey earlier today and I thought I'd probably come back to you, ask you for some additional information. And I'll be doing that in the coming days, but, but it is quite complex. I would be interested to know how they're going to get to zero also, but at this point I'm still trying to reconstruct how they get where they are. And it is, it's, it's, it's it's a little heavy, it's, it's, the lifting is heavier than I anticipated. And so, but when I get that information, I, I want to share with everyone so that we have a full understanding of, of, of actually what's happening. But I do have a partial picture. I would hesitate to throw it out, but you know, when we get some free time, I'll tell you what I think I see.
I agree with everything Mr. Ethely said. Any, any other questions about, about the memo or what we need to do? And again with Zoom, I always tell people just interrupt me, that's fine, because it's hard for me to see faces, everybody close anyway. I know there's a hand icon or something, but I don't know how to use it either, so. If, if not, I'll wait another minute, but if not, the question would be approval by the council for a resolution for appropriation. Twelve thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents in overtime for the fire department so that the operation would be legal and we can, we can submit the checks.
So move.
Thank you very much. You know, motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? I think we have a motion with Mr. Davis, by Mr. Ethely. All right, call the roll.
St. Columbia.
Yes.
Franklin. Crockett. Davis.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Ethely.
Yes.
Or yes?
Motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the permit approval for the June tenth parade by Ms. Linda Patterson. And as I alluded to earlier, that should be in your packet. And for those who have logged in to join us, event permits have to be filled out and approved and signed off by each department head. And as you can see, for those of you who have a copy, all that has, has taken place. Been signed off on by all the department heads. Of course, the, the big issue now is, is coronavirus and how to do these things in a way that's healthy and safe. And I don't know if Ms. Patterson is on the agenda or anything like that, but I know that I have been assured that by her, Ms. Rattler, that following all the precautions and the parade is being done in a way that will be in compliance with both state and local requirements on, on the coronavirus. Any questions about the Juneteenth celebration? Event permit? Think if I forgot anything? If not, do we have a motion to approve the permit?
Mr. Mayor Joe St. Columbia, I'll make a motion that we approve the Juneteenth participation.
And I'm sorry, I didn't hear the second.
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, anybody.
Mr. St. Columbia moves and Mr. Ethely spoken to motion. Any questions or comments about the Juneteenth event permit? All right, call the roll.
Frank. Davis.
Yes.
Ethely.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Rocket. St. Columbia.
Yes.
Or yes?
Motion passes. Again, thanks, and let me take an opportunity again to invite everybody to celebrate this Friday and to also, to the extent that you can participate. And also I want to, I want to especially mention again, that this is community effort and I think it's important to the community. Hope we all participate in, in the activities and stay safe while we're doing so. All right, the last thing on the the, the event permit, and I apologize, Miss Sandy and I have gone over this in advance. So some of these items have been moved off the agenda because they're not going to come up. So the event permit approval for the festival has been delayed until they, they're working out what, what they're going to do with the festival this year. So the last item on the agenda is Mr. Larry Evans regarding the Conway Twitty sign. And sorry, so you should have a copy of that. I'm sorry, behind the curve.
They already had everything when it was given out last year.
So I know that if somebody, if you could refresh my memory, so that was submitted to the planning commission for approval and I guess it was approved?
Mr. Mayor Andre Valley, for, for the record, it was submitted to the planning commission, it was already approved. The council had already approved and we did decide. You all, not you all, the body as a whole, the governing body sent to planning commission for recommendations. And we need to draft an ordinance with, for based on what they did. They looked at the city of New Orleans. So New Orleans has a simple procedure. And the one thing that they were concerned about signs is the signs be, to be marked and distinct as completely different from our street signs. Cause all of the others are, are not. And I was trying to take my notes to see exactly how much they, they said that the people applying should have a, a fee to pay for both the signage as well as just a fee in general. But I will forward you all and anyone else on the call who wants a copy of the city of New Orleans ordinance, because that's the one they wanted to present. And after coronavirus, we never came back. They, they had approved it. We, we never came back, had another meeting. And I went back and looked at my notes and then they had already approved it, but it never got to the council agenda. But as relation to Conway Twitty, you all have already approved Conway Twitty. The issue is there hasn't been a discussion of what type of signage. And I think that what was said is Mr. Evans was supposed to submit it to this, to this, took the information and sent it to the state for their approval. And then Ms. Ramsey waiting on response back for that. It's been six months, so they may not be totally accurate as to what I just said, but that's my recollection about what status was of Conway Twitty. And I'd invite either one of them to comment, whether Mr. Evans or, or Ms. Ramsey. But I think the only thing left for us to do is have the signage approved and it makes sure it's a different color, different distinction. And the, this board hadn't voted on a color or distinction as to, as to signage. And the Conway Twitty, because you all already approved it, the, the planning commission and really did with that in detail other than they prefer it to be a different color than others for us to dress. These others that already exist, so there'd be different colors so that people won't be confused. For instance, the Super Ten Allen J Smith sign is identical to Ladino. If you're driving down Panama Road or driving down Highway forty-nine, what you see is you don't know whether Super Ten Allen Smith Street or Ladino Street. They're side by side and, and, and actual Super Ten Allen Smith sign is precedes the actual street sign. There's two different poles and it's, it looks like a Super Ten Allen Smith Street versus honorary, so it's not a distinction between the two. So the city council, see what I determined, colors, color schemes. The Cherry Street signs are, are, are black and gold. That would be fine with me, but I'm not a city council member. But I think you need something that's just distinct from what you have as the green and, green and white. What did I yield to you, Ms. Ramsey or Mr. Evans?
Well, let me, let me stop a minute and say, I think Mr. Evans is on the call. And you, you did get approved in time to get on the agenda. Is there something you would like to say?
Yes, thank you for giving me a chance to be on the agenda tonight. I first brought this to the council during the Jay Hallwell.
Larry Williams Evans.
William Larry Evans.
Yeah.
Okay, I first brought this to the council during that Jay Hallwell's administration and was unable to get an approval. Brought it to this particular administration at the very beginning. This is my third appearance asking for approval for this signage. I was asked to get approval from the planning commission. I was able to do that. I was able to get approval from the state director of highways. And I've submitted both of those to Ms. Ramsey. So that information is, is there. I've sat through a number of requests to have streets named. And they've never taken more than five minutes. This has been in process for, for, for more than a year. The tale, the motion to approve the honorary signing. A motion was made a year ago and it was immediately tabled. And nothing has happened since and no one's asked any questions, no one's given me.
Mr. Evans, I need to interrupt you for a second, because I remember doing ordinance, they, they approved it. We did that a while ago.
I've never been, I've never been, I've never been informed of an approval or need or instructions on what I needed to do to go further in having signs erected.
Okay, but it was my understanding it was approved, because we did a resolutions just to that effect that it was approved last year.
That was never, it's never even shared with me.
Okay. It was my understanding that we were waiting on the state to get it back. They approved it and that's, that was my understanding, the holder position that I was informed. And it may be just a bunch of miscommunication, but the council did take up the issue and they did vote because specifically they voted, because initially the resolution said all the way, it was St. Columbia corrected where the, the street was to, to end. Because we, in the initial ordinance, we had the wrong ending, because it came all the way to part of Columbia Street versus ending ending with disco.
Okay, as far as the state highway commission is concerned, I submitted my communications with them to Ms. Ramsey. What was submitted by the city to the state that needs to be approved? When was that done?
I would defer to Ms. Ramsey, because we, we did the ordinance.
Your sounds all.
I mean, the resolution.
Oh, I'll look everything up tomorrow when I get back to the office.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
I, I think Andre Valley, again, I think as a practical matter, I thought I'll be waiting on data approval for the council to designate a distinct color be ordered different. And every, must, as with, with the cities are required is the people who want the sign to, to make the fun, to pay for the, the, the signage themselves. The city didn't pay for the honorary sign, if I recall that. But again, I would defer to Ms. Ramsey on that.
Mr. Mayor Joe St. Columbia.
Yes, sir.
I, I think the only thing left on this particular street thing was the color of the sign. What other cities have them and that, what colors do they use statewide?
What I've always seen is a sort of navy blue or royal, I don't think navy blue is right.
Regular street sign.
Version of blue is what I've seen anyway. I bet I could be mistaken. I mean, that's, that's just my recog, best recollection. I mean, I, I'm certainly in favor of moving forward, if we can move forward tonight. And I don't know if I can make motions, Ms. Ramsey, have to be honest with you, I'm not aware that I can, I can vote, but I don't believe I can make motions.
Right, well.
But I can, I can ask for motions, but I'm not exactly sure what we would say in the motion. So we need some clarity, Mr. Valley.
I thought we had approved this, I was approved by the council.
It was.
The only thing that hadn't been approved is the color of the signage. Andre Valley, again, you need the color of the signage to, and the, and the, and the approval of the state to make sure that, that, that we have authority to place the signs on the highway. It didn't, it didn't belong to the city. And so those are the only two things that we know, the color of the signage and what you're looking at, not just this sign, but every future sign. And then the command, after this, the planning commission, what they wanted was you all to adopt that their policy as to relates to all future and renaming of, of streets that's honorary. But that's a, that's a separate issue. Conway Twitty was the last, Conway Twitty was the last one that was done before y'all sent it to the planning commission. But the commander Christian did discuss, did approve and sent it right back up. And, but they left the issue as to what color size to the city council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we.
Yeah, Mr. Joe, before, before you say anything, just hold, hold on thought. Ms. Ford had a question, she's been trying to get.
Mr. Mayor, the golden black signs, are they just designated for downtown? Or are they, because I believe that William Wright sign, I don't know. The black and gold, is it just for downtown or is it for honorary?
You know, I don't know, but I bet somebody else here knows.
I think the, I think the AMP just voted for those, they were put up and I don't think they ever came for the city council, to be candid.
They did not.
Right, the black and gold signs, because I'm sitting there in my city attorney office, I'm looking at Perry Street sign, that, that black with gold letters. And all of them down from, from Perry all the way down to the other end of black and gold.
That's, that's why I was wondering where they just designated for historic downtown area.
I believe that's.
Neither the city council nor the planning commission made a designation. Those signs were approved by the, by the AMP, they were purchased by the AMP and they've been placed there, but none of that was approved by either body.
Ms. Ford, anything else?
Well, now, I, I would just like something that's coordinated, you know, that that they might all be one color. Instead of having three or four different colors, black and gold, green and white and blue and white, whatever.
Good point.
I, I have a question. I guess to, for two purposes, first to, to correct one thing I said, this was sent to the planning commission. The purpose of it going to the planning commission, because I, I recall, I, I made the comment, we don't have any criteria for which we would use to determine who gets a street named after. So, so we referred this to the planning mission so that they could establish a criteria, because what had happened before is we just kind of had people who would come and say, my relative was a great person and we want a street named after. And so that we, what we did is we sent it to the planning commission. Did they actually implement a process and procedure for determining whether, you know, they would approve the naming of a street or renaming of a street? And I'm not asking what that specific criteria is, but I guess to, to anybody who might know, because I don't think we ever got a, I don't, I don't recall ever receiving a report. But did they come up with a criteria for renaming?
There's none I've ever heard of.
I haven't heard that. I just know that, I think that they recognized that the state, as Mr. Evans pointed out, I believe, had to approve the next step. And they approved it, but as far as a process, Mr. Ethely, and I remember this discussion, I don't know the answer to that. I don't, I don't recall it if they did establish one.
They haven't because we haven't approved it.
Well, that's kind of a chicken and egg thing. Are they going to recommend a procedure for us to
And that, that's the thing, I thought we were asking them to, to, to create a process and procedure for us so that we would have something in place. With, I don't know if it would be the plan, well, I think, I guess we wanted the planning commission to assess each request and make a determination or recommendation to the council as to whether it should be approved. And that's so we could kind of weigh through a lot of the requests we get, we get to, to change street names. But you know, I don't recall ever seeing anything in place, so.
Mr. Ethely?
Yes.
Sandy Ramsey here, you wanted them to determine the size of the sign to be used, the color, the dimensions, everything about the sign. They were supposed to write up the protocol and then get it to the council to approve and we've never had anything to approve.
Okay, that explains it, that, that, that explains how we got where we are then. Okay, that explains it, that, that, that explains how we got where we are then. We haven't received anything from the planning commission.
Right.
May I speak, this is William Evans.
Uh, yes, Mr. Evans, go ahead.
Mrs. Bremley, the planning commission approved the Conway Twitty signing request. And they stated in their communication that future uh requests uh would be, go through a process and that process was to be developed.
So.
Whatever process they were, they were gonna envision had nothing to do with their approval of the Conway Twitty. They specifically approved that.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other, I'm getting, Mr. St. Columbia was ready to make a motion and I interrupted him. Are there any other comments or questions before I recognize Mr. St. Columbia? Okay, Mr. St. Columbia.
Do we need to have another motion if we've already approved it? Do we need to make another motion if we've already approved it? Or what, or what is this for?
It's a good question.
I'm not going, I wasn't planning on making a motion to approve the Conway Tweety uh Boulevard uh idea. I want to ask for the color, that's all, and that'll end this thing.
Oh.
I think it's already been approved by the council that we honorary uh named the street after Conway Tweety from, uh, I think it was from the bridge down to Colum- uh, Arkansas Street. That's where it was to stop, if I understand, like, back when we made the approval. And now all we need is the color of the sign and I'd like to make a motion that we do it in blue and white letters on blue background. I think that's what other cities have done. I believe.
Mr. St. Columbia makes a motion that the Conway Twitty sign on the highway from the bridge to Arkansas Street intersection be blue with white letter. Say light blue or, I can't remember, blue just blue, the white with white.
Look back down with white letter.
Okay.
It could be a light blue.
Yes, I, did I say that correctly? Did I state that, restate that? Okay, is there a second? Is there a second in Mr. St. Columbia's motion?
I have a question.
It sounds like Mr. Franklin.
Oh, I had a question.
Is that Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Uh, it's for, for the signing, have, have we established who will be paying for the sign?
No, I'm, I'm not aware of what the protocol is. To state highway, most drugs, most signs on state highways are paid for by the state. This could be an exception, I know there's an application that has to be made uh to the state highway department and they have to approve it. And then I think they, they are also the ones that, that place them, so I wouldn't be surprised if we have to pay for them.
What, what, and, and by that being said there, uh, there are a lot of different colors. Uh, Linnae Warren has a sign, I think it's green and white. At Bishop Alex J. Smith has a sign, I think it's green and white. So who would, who would figure out? I know it's, it's up to the city council to do the color, but if we already got one color, I know this, this is not downtown, well, the historic district has black and gold, if I'm not mistaken. So I, I think, you know, you might want to stay the same. They ramble uh as they are, so.
And Ms. Ford had earlier mentioned the black and gold.
Yeah, I heard it before, yeah, so that's what I'm saying. Um, so I, I make a motion to keep it as same as downtown. I mean, uh, historic district, green, I mean, uh, black and gold, if that's the color. Because tho- those signs that they got like for Fort Curtis and Freedom Park, I'm thinking they're black and gold. So.
So, I'm not mistaken.
It's uh historic district is.
It's funny, you can't look at it, but if I'm not mistaken.
No, I could hit.
A lot further back of the motion, didn't get a second. Um, but if I'm not mistaken, the uh state, miss, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, the next step in this process is to get to the state to approve a design with a color scheme. And the planning commission has asked us to pick that color scheme. And if I say that incorrectly, anybody or want to add to that? Am I, am I mistaken? And I could be, I'm just, that's why I said it out loud, I could be corrected. Mr. Valley or anybody? So. It, so interrupt me if I did mistake and correct me, but, um, so really the question for the council then, it sounds like. Um, unless there is uh consensus tonight, and there might be. Um, I guess blue and white's not the consensus, but if there's another one that's a consensus, if somebody wants to make a motion.
There.
We can do that, or we can uh ask for designs to be submitted to the council to approve at the next meeting. I'm open to suggestions.
Mr. Mayor, Joe St. Columbia.
Mayor.
Mr. St. Columbia and then Mr. Franklin, I think.
The uh blue and gold, I think, was designed for the downtown historic area. And those are not honorary streets, those are street signs. As I understand, that's why they did them as a historic section of the city in black and gold. And those are regular street signs, but we're talking about an honorary uh sign and I, that's why I think the color needs to be uh more apropos to the uh type of sign we're trying to put up. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would like for some choices to be submitted to the council and a decision is uh made. However, I don't want Mr. Evans to think that uh, the Conway Twitty Memorial Boulevard has not been passed. That we just need to uh maybe get some color submitted to us and that we have all memorial street signs the same color.
I agree there.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Ford. Uh, I think Mr. Franklin had a question at some point in there or had a comment. I don't want to pass him up.
It's okay, Mayor, I'm used to it.
So did, so I think, Ms. Franklin, do you still want to make a comment?
Nah, you can, you can keep going.
All right, any other comments? The color of the sign, the application to the state. Anybody want to weigh in on Ms. Ford's suggestion? I'm just looking for a consensus, I don't have a particular, my personal, I don't have a personal preference. I do, I do think we need some consensus or direction to go in, so anything that would be helpful.
Mayor Chris Franklin.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I mean, um, like Ms. Ford said, uh, get some, get, uh, see what everybody wants. Uh, different designs, you say you would like, what would you like to do? So you submit something, A, A and P, everybody submits what they like, we just choose a vote so everybody, Mr. Evans, he has, he has opinions as well, let, just let everybody submit some by Friday or by Monday and you know, by the next meeting. With college special call me, just tell us, let's do it that way. Give everybody an opportunity to participate in this, so they will say they would, well, this person chose this color. Let us as a body, let everybody submit to the city council, see, I go for it. Let me, and has it, have his input, or the people who want the sign to be put up, let them have a, let them put their input in. And let's, they go from there.
I think that's a good suggestion. Uh, maybe we ought to make it next Tuesday or something, give people a little more time. Mr. Evans, you, do you want to comment or anybody else want to comment on that before we move on? It's really our. Mr. Evans, you still on?
No further comment.
Okay. Well, I think that's a good suggestion and we don't seem to have a consensus, so why don't we ask, um, Mr. Evans and anybody else, council members to have a, you have a preference, color preference. We sound, it sounds like we have options, if you want to submit that to Ms. Sandy and/or me. Um, we'll try to get those options before the council, uh, for the next meeting. And then we maybe can move on with this, Mr. Evans, get, get these signs put up. Okay, if, if there's no objection to that, then we'll move on, thank you, Mr. Evans. Okay, that's the last item on our agenda, I do want, before we, I want to go back, uh, and I'm, and I apologize in advance for not understanding how to read comments and, uh, I should have pointed out earlier on the Juneteenth parade, that it starts at Eliza Miller School and it ends up on Cherry Street at Phillips and Missouri Street. There will be gospel singing and a speaker. Um, there will be drive-in style, there will be a concert, no one will be outside of their vehicles. Um, I failed to mention that and I did not read the messages uh until we talked about something else. So I want to go back to that, it starts at 12 o'clock Friday uh and ends, no, I'm sorry, Saturday on the 20th and it begins at 12 o'clock uh noon and ends at 3 o'clock. And again, that's starting in Eliza Miller School in West Halloween and moves to downtown Cherry Street, Phillips and Missouri Street. Everybody stays in their car. So, again, we want to thank Ms. Linda Patterson and Alma Rattler and all the other people involved in that. So if you can, make sure you come out and support that. All right, any other business to come for the council?
Hey, Mayor Adam, Mayor Ad- oh, I'm sorry, Monica.
Go ahead.
Uh, I don't know, I joined the call late, I don't know if you guys have already discussed the fire, did y'all?
We did.
Okay, 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 okay.
There was a question.
Yes.
We did, it was, there was a question about the projection of zero at the time for the next pay period and didn't have a good answer.
Okay, the, uh, no, uh, uh, Assistant Chief told me that uh, the next, it shouldn't be, it should be zero on the next one. This is how they do it, I mean, because it comes at the end of that 28-day cycle and they had been spreading it out like every two weeks, every pay period, they had been spreading it out. But generally, you know, you shouldn't have zero on the first one. And uh, about overtime, it should be on the last check, and so they had been spreading it out. But this check, I mean, you had a 12,000, I guess 12,177 or whatever. But uh, the next check should be zero, and so what they're gonna start doing is, is doing it like that, doesn't it? So they're gonna present it, hopefully if uh Chief Watson gets it down like he said he was gonna do. You shouldn't have, you should have one, one pay period where, where there's nothing and then the second pay period when it's that, those four hours on there. And so, uh, Chief, uh, Assistant Chief Brown said that there's, should be no, I mean, should be uh zero on this next one.
Any questions?
On the next council meeting, yeah.
Any questions, Mr. Turner? That was the only question I had and I didn't have, that I, and I didn't have.
Okay, well, well, I didn't know, I didn't know I had joined in late, so I just wanted to make sure y'all took care of it.
We did, thank you, Mr. Turner, but any other questions?
Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes, I have a question.
Mr. Franklin, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. uh, Mr. Franklin, yeah.
Hey, Mr. Turner, how, how's our finances look for next month? You know.
You, you breaking up, I mean, what you, what, uh, see, the thing about that is that I told, talked to.
Uh, Mr. I'm, you know, concerned about the, the loss of revenue.
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Okay.
Can you break, no, I'm saying you break, you kind of was breaking up, I was, you know, asking you, could you hear me, because you were breaking up in my. Okay, uh, okay, on the June, so the thing is about the June, we gonna get the payment in July because of the reminisce, and so they report for June, and so we get June's payment in July. So July is gonna be the last month we actually get the payment. And like I said, it's already been budgeted for, so it's already in the budget. Now, past that, y'all had passed the budget, y'all saw the budget, y'all saw all the projections and all that stuff. So it's already been projected. I can't, more than that, I can't tell you more than that, uh, Mr. Franklin. I mean, but y'all have, I mean, we, we know we projected this year, half a year. I think I projected a loss of $280,000, that's what I think I projected. So I can't guarantee you that, but that was, that was my prediction.
Okay, cause see, I, well, well.
And but everything else.
People are saying about how city government works and what's worked.
But, but, but what I'm saying, Mr. Franklin, y'all guys, you, you guys in your budget that you, that you passed, y'all recognized this. Y'all recognized that we lost $280,000. But I think we still had a surplus of like $70,000, $80,000 or something like that. So if we, if we go according to budget, we, we, you know, we good.
And Mr. Turner.
And so that's why, and so that's why.
Mr. Turner, if I, if I can, if I can interject, because we're having some connectivity issues, are we on, on, where are we on terms of revenue projections right now?
Oh, everything is still good, like I said, uh, about the COVID thing, like I explained earlier, uh, our tax base is really, ain't, is really groceries, uh, general merchandise, like Walmart and Family Dollar and general, uh, Dollar General. And for some reason, I don't know why, uh, auto parts, I don't know why, all that increased and restaurants. But tho- those are our tax bases, we, you know, we don't have a, you know, our tax base, we don't make, we don't have Lexus dealerships and uh, Lowe's and uh, Family, I mean, uh, Best Buys and stuff like that. We really are really, we, we, you know, we living on the basics. And so it's really driving us right now, we, you know, we might not have no financial problem on the tax side. Now, Mr. Etherly said, no, you know, uh, nobody really knows and he's actually right, nobody really knows. But the thing, the, 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 those are the base, that, that is what's driving our tax base, that's like a third of our tax base. Grocery stores and general merchandise stuff. And so it's not affecting us right now. Now, in the future, who knows, but right now it's not affecting us right now. So I, I, and I, 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 I predict next month, I, I don't see nothing. I think August will be okay, I think so, I'm not sure, but I think August is okay. But I don't know about September and November, because, you know, who knows, but right now I think we're okay.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, any other questions, Mr. Turner? Not, that's the, all the items on the agenda for the evening, if there's no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, Mayor.
I'm, I'm sorry, who's talking?
Davis.
Mom.
I had a, a quick question, have you spoken to anyone about the, with the state department, I mean, the state highway about the grants? Have I missed?
Yes, um, yes, we've had meetings with them. And of course, uh, well, part of this we face as a city, we've had so much rain, we're and we also had the storm and it's all the same people doing all the same work at the street department. Trying to get these limbs cleared and then we just had another storm. So for the city's part, I know that we're behind because of the rains and I'm sure the highway department is too, however. Haven't said that. They're always negligent, in my opinion, at mowing the state highways and a lot of people don't realize, you know, string town, y'all do, but a lot of people, our listeners might not, Stringtown Road, Fourth Street, out by Hayes and that area, those are all state roads, of course, the bypass. Um, the bypass has something that they told me was a wildflower program that's obviously not successful. And they have contracted with a contractor who supposedly mows it three times a summer or a year. But I think we all. But I think we all can agree that we don't see that, and the wildfire program has not been a success. So I'm upset about it too. And, uh, but yes, I've sat down with them and we've had the maintenance person who's in charge of that come down here, meet with our people. We've complained in Little Rock, we've complained everywhere, and all the, I mean, the more, all I can, all I can say is the more the merrier. If anybody wants phone numbers and names, email me and Miss Helen, we'll get them to you to call, it would, it would be, and I mean, this very sincerely, it would be helpful, the more people I hear from, because I think it's a serious problem, and I don't think the rain is the only excuse in this case.
I would like.
Hey, Mayor, can I, Mayor, Mayor, can I add something?
But I don't think it's been cut this year, has it? I mean, not this season?
Not, not successfully, no.
Oh, and then on 49 and, and Russell, I mean, the grass is so high, you can barely see the highway turning out.
What little cutting, is cutting that the city has done to try and provide some safety, but it's not been the state. And we've also asked, the ditches on Fourth Street and some of the other ditches that grow so high in the middle, we've asked them to scour those out, we've been promised they would. Again, on other weather issues, but I'm, I'm, I agree with you, I'm pretty impatient about it myself. I'm sorry, Mr. Turner, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, you know, uh, during our budget process, and you know, I, I, these are technical things, and I know that we don't have the money in the bank and things like that, but I know that Ms. Davis's concerns were, uh, demolition of properties and cutting grass, and so those were her concerns, every council member had their own, uh, their concerns, so we, I, I, I knew that. Me and her, I put $50,000 and I think it's in code enforcement because of her. So she can move that $50,000 that's in code enforcement because the street and sanitation are taking care of it. And so all we have to do is just move that $50,000 in the budget and move that to sanitation to cover the grass cutting stuff.
I have a question.
You know, we, we, I mean, we had to do that today, but you know, it's, uh, I made sure I put $50,000 in demolitions for her. And if she wants to, we can move that $50,000 into sanitation and take care of that.
And, and.
Yeah, it, it had to be today, but you know, we, we can get around to it.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Thanks, Ms. Davis, did you have a follow, follow up there?
No, I don't have, thank you.
And I agree with you, but.
Okay, yeah, because I know, that, Monica, Monica wants the grass cut.
I do, I do.
Yeah, you want the grass, you want the grass, we.
And I want to, I've said it to look.
Yes, ma'am, I understand, I already know you want the grass cut.
But you can move it, I mean, y'all can do that, I mean, we can do that on the next council meeting with them, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, is, is there anybody else?
We adjourn.
St. Columbia made, it's nice, we adjourn, is there a second?
It's, I, I had a.
All right, if there's no further business, may I adjourn? Thank you.